Good evening and welcome to the Larkspur Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, March 12. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Chalmers?
Present.
Commissioner Swisher?
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner Hull?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on matters not on the agenda? Nope, hearing none. We'll move on. Can we have the planning director's report, please?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, then we'll go. Okay, we'll go straight into the public hearing. We have three items on the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. The first one is we are looking again at the draft ordinance modifying text in the Larkspur Municipal Code to implement state laws regarding housing. And we will decide tonight whether to make a recommendation to city council. So if, Elise, if you could give your staff.
So what I presented tonight, unfortunately, I didn't give you a copy that called out the changes that were made since the last hearing. So the, the, we made changes in response to all the comments you had at the last meeting. And then in addition, on the Exhibit A, the city attorney spelled out in new language, the floor area bonus and the lot coverage bonus, which I thought was, is just much more clear than it has been in the past. So I would definitely recommend adopting the language as proposed in this revised draft. But you, there's no urgency in approving this if you want more time to consider the the draft changes in red line. And I'm happy to also answer any questions that you have or go over any particular changes that were made.
I had some very minor, I would call them more corrections rather than changes, based on my comments from last, from the last meeting. But before I bring that up, is there anyone? Did you have changes?
I had a minor, really minor question. The housing replacement requirement, which was under Section 10. And we had changed the number on that, but I noticed it's been changed again to eighteen sixteen three thousand.
I saw that's, that's a typo.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's three hundred, but I was wondering where the three hundred came from and not two eight.
Because it was two eight six before.
It was two eight five and they already had a two eight five, so they were going to change it to, I thought, two eight six.
And there's a couple other new additions in that section. So I believe it was just put to the end because just because the other.
Okay.
For the other numbering in that, in that.
As long as he knows what number they're putting in. But there's a three thousand in that. It's just, I think it's a typo.
Right.
Okay. That was my big question.
Yeah. The other ones, I guess, I think are just little typos too, is in Section Six, where it's the definition of sensitive receptor. What I would recommend is defining it the first time you mention it, which is in Section Four, subsection four, rather than the second time you mention it.
And just leave it out of the second one?
Yes. And then if you, you, you can do what's customarily done, which is you define it as a defined term with capital letters. And then you use sensitive receptors with capital letters in the next section. Again, very minor. And then.
On that note, it's, I was reading it and I was thinking that maybe it should be sensitive receptors include instead of are, or maybe, I don't know if we want to
Yes.
Define it.
Yeah, yeah, we should say that.
Also, page, section five.
Including without limitation. It's always.
Section Six, paragraph five, asthmatics is spelled wrong.
Asthmatics?
Yeah, A S T H.
I wonder what that was. Let's see where that is.
It's a.
It's in the new definition. It's in five, page five, section five. I think I Googled that to see.
Yes. I would know, I guess, huh? A S T H M A T I C I.
Yeah. Thought that wasn't, yeah, medical. It looked weird. Did you find it?
I can't, but I'm sure it's in there. I know.
So for the sake of the recording, it's in Section Six, there are two new paragraphs, four and five. In five, I'm rec, we're recommending change, moving the definition of sensitive receptors up to four, because that's when you first mention it. Well, I assume, you know, it should be moved to when you first mention it in that section. If it's in subsections one, two, or three, you would put the definition in one, two, or three. I don't think you have one.
I don't think there is one in there, so that should be fine.
Okay. Because they, they're adding new subsections four and five. That means there's already one, two, and three, so.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
But would you put it up here in the, the heading where it says to protect sensitive receptors?
Actually, you know what? They've got it in twice.
Oh, I see what, the asthmatics is in the second one and not the first one.
Oh, yeah.
So you need to move that up to the top and correct what's at the top, basically. Sensitive receptors are children and elderly and others.
Include.
Include.
It should be include.
All right, I've got that.
And then just.
And then capitalize it in the next one.
Yeah. And, and, and also take it out of the next, where they've added it in.
Delete the second one. Okay.
Then in Section Eight, the low barrier navigation centers.
Mm-hmm.
In D. I, they've gone to the trouble of making low barrier navigation center a defined term, which would always be capitalized, but then they don't capitalize it in D.
Okay.
This is much more helpful.
I'll wait till you're, let us know when you're, when you're ready for more.
Sorry to find that next one. Lo.
It's in D, second line, the first sentence. Permit required.
Oh, here we go. And then, then following section needs to have a different letter, too. I don't know if yours looks like two D's in a row.
Yeah, that's two D's.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I had one on some of the stuff that was added to Section Ten. So Section Ten, Item B, is housing replacement requirement is shall be enforced for any property that is subject to any other form of rent or price control through a public entity's valid exercise of its police power. I'm just, I'm just more curious how that would play with the Measure D that I think, I mean, I think they're still counting votes, but I think it's
It's close.
It's close. So I'm just curious how that would.
I, I thought that, that that's what triggers it, isn't, if we have, if we have a city rent control, that those units would be subject to this. But I do want to check with the city attorney, but that's how I would read it, is that if it, if it passes or stays in effect, then that would, it would meet B.
Okay.
And then in Section Ten, an applicant shall be ineligible for a permit for housing demolition or a housing development project per, I think there's just a word missing. This is in the second sentence.
Okay.
Yeah. And then in the same area that you were just talking about, C, A, B, and C, do you mean to say that restricts rents to levels affordable to persons and families of lower or very low income, or is it of low or very low income? And I only asked that because in the previous version, you talked about low.
I think it could be low.
It was low and, and very low.
Those have definitions.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
This is probably just from the statute. We can take that out.
And then I noticed they changed it from, well, to public entities. So sometimes, I mean, this is just a general question, I mean, general, we can't solve for this tonight, but sometimes you talk about the city, sometimes you talk about the planning commission, sometimes you talk about a public entity. It's not always consistent.
I think because maybe there's some, I, I would have left that in there just because that's from the statute. And if there might be some other public entity, then
Would.
exercise rent control, I don't know what it would be. I mean, I think it's probably unlikely that it's someone other than the city council and the state, but it could be the state or the or, I don't know what else.
Any public.
I don't know what else. It might have been something that's like on a particular housing project or something.
redevelopment project, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'd imagine so.
Seems like we're consistent on the single occupancy. What is it called? Single room occupancy facilities. It seems like by requiring a kitchen where, I mean, based on this list of other cities ordinances where by requiring a kitchen, we're sort of in line with several jurisdictions.
Yeah, I didn't find that many requirements that we didn't already have. There are just variations of the same.
We were requiring a bathroom, were we not, before?
I think we were allowing a shared bathroom, but requiring a kitchens that the unit could be counted. And there was some question whether or not we needed to require a separate bathroom in order for it to count as a housing unit.
Yeah, it's, it looks like, having read through these guys, that most people had a bathroom, a toilet and a sink.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah.
Which I, I think is what should be in a unit that when you, when you have family, whatever family.
As it be, I don't think it's a.
Maybe it's not a requirement, but.
Or you couldn't, you could make that a requirement. I think it's going to be cost prohibitive if someone was trying to build one for extremely low income people, probably, because it wasn't shared bathroom would just be more cost effective, but that, I don't think there's a large demand to construct those here in Larkspur. So I don't think we're going to see that come up as an issue very often.
Yeah, I think asking somebody to wander out in the night to find the bathroom is, is, doesn't work real well. Doesn't work for me, anyway.
And we do allow group homes, which could be homes that share a bathroom and a kitchen. So it could be just a different kind of housing type that shares a bathroom.
Yeah.
Oh, this is a different version from the one I looked at. Now I'm looking at it.
I only changed the three thousand.
Oh, that was the only thing you changed? Okay. Well, I see the one thing that you changed. And then I just had a question at the end. I see you say that you're intending that this is going to be incorporated into the municipal code. But the text in sections two through seven. So do you mean these sections, like in this ordinance that we're looking?
Two through seventeen.
Oh, there's a one there. Okay, great. Right, so seventeen is the last one? Yeah. Then that's it. I didn't have anything else on this. I have not had a chance to read the ADU. So can we, in theory, I, I'm going to ask commissioners if they have any further comments, but my question is, can we move this to the city council without the lot coverage language? Or do we need both? The lot, I mean, the ADU and J D?
Um, well, you could take it out, but then, and we could come back with a second ordinance, but I, there's no rush, so I would think just bring it one time, so we don't have to bring two ordinance to them.
Do you have comments on this ordinance, these ordinance changes? You know, you, if you have a chance to read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no comment, no questions? Okay. What about on the ADU, J D, ADU language?
I read it, but I think I would appreciate a chance to get into it a little bit.
Okay. I'd like to read it.
Yeah, I'd rather look at that a little more.
Okay.
Thank.
More time. Okay.
You want to take any public comment? Because there's public comment?
No, no public comment. All right, no public comment for the record. Fine. So we're going to, do we need to do anything? Do we need to make a motion to continue this?
Make a motion to continue, and believing next being March twenty-sixth, if I'm doing math correctly? Yes, so that we don't have to read notice in the paper. That'd be great.
Yes.
I'll, I'll move that we continue. What's the?
Mark.
Number, do I need to?
Oh, continue, you could just do item four A, I guess.
Good idea. Let's continue item four A to, to the next March meeting.
March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, I have a second.
I'll.
Right. Do we, do we need to vote on this?
Yes, please. Commissioner Chalmers?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hull?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
All right, the motion carried unanimously, so we'll have that on the next meeting.
Okay, are we going to be reviewing just this draft here, or do you want to send us an updated version?
I'll send you. Let me send you one with these corrections, because they've just been made, and then you'll have one. I'll just send it out as soon as I can, so you'll have plenty of time to read it. You'll have two weeks to read it.
And if you can do it in color, really is helpful.
Definitely. So let me know if it's not in color when you receive it.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on. This was the Fed meeting, yeah. We are now going to discuss item four B, which is to discuss the historical interpretation that gyms, fitness studios and fitness centers are school use in districts where gym fitness centers should be permitted or conditionally permitted. Which means we're going to discuss whether we should have a definition of a fitness facility in our code. So Elise, would you like, or Jackie?
So Jackie's, Jackie's on Zoom. She'll be making a presentation.
Hi.
For the next two items.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. So I actually, I don't have a presentation for these items, since these are really just kind of informal discussion items, but I, I have a verbal presentation, just on a, anything to share with you on slides. So recently, or at least since my time with the city, which is coming up on two years, I've noticed several applications for what could be defined as fitness facilities, yoga studios, Pilates studios, primarily. But we also do have some other existing uses, like our martial arts school. We have a personal training facility on North Magnolia. We have Orange Theory Fitness. And, and getting these requests, I, I noticed that our code does not define a fitness facility. And historically, planners before me have set the precedent to approve these as either an instructional service if they occur in the transitional downtown, storefront downtown, or garden downtown districts, or if they're outside of those districts, they've been interpreted as a school. School does not have a standard definition in the code. And school parking, which I apologize, I realize I left that important part of this sentence out in your memo, of school parking varies depending on what kind of school. So our off-street parking requirements have different requirements for an elementary school, which is one and a half per classroom. And then there's an assembly auditorium requirement. High schools have a higher parking requirement. Obviously, we've got usually bigger schools, and then also students start driving, and then colleges have an even bigger parking requirement. So reviewing some of the previous conditional use permits that have come through, parking wasn't really an issue. For instance, Orange Theory Fitness was approved in the Bonner Shopping Center, which is, has a lot of available parking, so the parking wasn't even addressed. And then some of the other conditional use permits that have come through were in places that had already received variances to have less than the required parking for retail uses. And my assumption is that planners before me would have thought that these school slash gym uses would have a lower parking intensity than retail would, and therefore, again, the parking didn't come up. So I haven't been able to find any concrete reference of what people have done for a parking standard for a fitness facility as a school. So really, the conversation today is, do you as a commission believe we should have a defined definition of a fitness facility versus an instructional service? So I, I'll read the instructional service definition. There's two different, there's instructional services with potentials for noise impacts. These are classes such as dance, aerobic, martial arts, music, et cetera, or instructional services with no noise associated impacts, such as language, arts instructions, fine arts, and small craft works. I will share my screen so we can look at this together. So these are the existing facilities, the, where they're located, their zoning district, and the mechanism of approval of how they came to be. The only one that I would like to point out, daily method, this is actually, was just a sign permit that they got. So again, my assumption here would be that the daily method was approved as an instructional service, since that's a can, a, a use that's defined within those zones. So there's just a bit of a disconnect here. We've got sometimes fitness facilities being called a school with a conditional use permit in the commercial areas. Sometimes they're conditionally allowed, uh, well, they've been historically allowed, which I'm, I'm surprised, because I would think a yoga studio would have a noise impact, but I'm, again, my guess is they've been allowed to go in under this definition here. So I would, I'd like to open up the conversation for you all about if you would like to direct staff for us to do a deeper dive on this, provide you with a definition, or if you have feedback about what a definition could be, if you have feedback about which zones you think these would be appropriate in. And if we should look at hiring a parking consultant like Parisi that we've worked with in the past to give us some guidance about what a good parking standard for a fitness facility might be. Please let me know if you have any questions or anything I can clarify for you.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Jackie. What is the actual mechanism of approval that you think is appropriate for a fitness facility?
Well, I think I, ideally, we would have zones where we have these as permitted uses, where they're not required to go through conditional use permit process. However, in the transitional downtown, storefront downtown, and garden downtown, we've already got conditional uses for instructional services with a potential for noise impact. So it might make sense if we define fitness facility to have those as a conditionally permitted within those zones, but maybe they would be permitted by right and C one, C two, and so on. And I think it's also important to note that our plan developments like Marin Mart and Bonner Country Club refer to the permitted uses for the C one and C, for the C one district. So what we would allow there is what would be allowed within those planned developments as well. Because right now, anytime someone in, in the Bonner Center, because it's not a defined use in their plan development, they're coming to us for a conditional use permit for the gyms, for the yoga studios. And as you know, they're, they're quite, quite popular here in our community. People do like to stay fit and healthy and they do add, they add to our community. There's one, there's one that's been approved, kind of in a its own unique way, and that is the small studio at the rear of Citrine, which is a retail store downtown. And that was approved as an accessory used to the primaries, which is retail. So we've, we've got that one, which sort of stands as an outlier.
And then can you clarify to the commission? So for the allowed, the, the areas that you're recommending allowed, that it's automatically by right as an allowed use? Where in our city is it? To R three, the transitional district, garden district? I forget what the S stands for.
I'm actually not, I'm, I'm not making that recommendation today. We just wanted to open this up for discussion and see if, if you all have feelings about that. I just wanted to present with you, to you, what
Got it.
is allowed. Because they've been defined as schools historically, they've pretty much always been processed as a conditional use, because schools are conditionally allowed within those zones. Schools are an allowed use in the R three, but we haven't had a, a request for any kind of fitness facility in the R three district, so.
Right, but where is the TD, SD, and G?
Oh, you'd like to see a picture of zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Just one moment. Okay. So.
Yeah, okay, any minute.
We are in City Hall right now. This is our yellow square here. So Garden Downtown is just south of us. This is like where Perry's is and that Magnolia shopping district is there. And then we have our storefront downtown, which goes all the way up to Doherty. Mount Tam Racket Club is in the transitional downtown here. And then, as we know, this may be going through some redevelopment in the future, that, that's possibility, but there's also this strip here. Going up Magnolia, we've got us some H, C two, and AP district here.
What was AP? AP?
Um, AP is typically just offices.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's professional offices. It's where we have our dental offices and a medic, some medical use, I believe. At least you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe some medical uses and professional offices in the, in the AP. And then in North Magnolia, we've got C one and C two, which straddle here. So for instance, and the C one here, this is where there's the, I, I don't know if any of you are familiar with SCAR, I think I'm pronouncing it correctly, SCAR Fitness. It's a smaller fitness facility. I think I'm pronouncing it correctly, SCAR Fitness. It's a smaller fitness facility. They offer personal training. Um, they are open to the public. I've seen people in there just working out on their own, but it's a really a small, quite a small facility. Um, that had had originally been approved as a yoga studio. And then when this fitness came in and it was allowed to basically be a continuation of that previously approved yoga studio. And then the C two across the street is primarily retail and um small eateries. And then going over to Sir Francis Drake. We have this area which is all under planned development. Uh, but they follow the allowable uses of the C two district here in Bon Air. And then it's also flanked by C two just a little bit. And then Marin Mart, which is again um under planned development, but is following the allowed uses of the commercial districts.
Are you intending that outdoor facilities are also included in this definition? So for example, like the tennis courts at Piper Park? I mean, is that a fitness facility?
Uh, that would be up for a a a discussion and for us to decide together. Uh, we can, we can make the definition however we want. Uh, we can fold the definitions of the instructional services into it or have them kind of as a sub definition or keep them as their own. Um, really whatever. The world is our oyster here. We get, we get to make the definition. Um, I do. Uh, it hadn't occurred to me because I was really just kind of laser focused on these businesses that were have been coming in. Um, but I think that that's certainly something that we can discuss.
So Jackie, just so I understand, it the present time, the conditional use is uh staff handled, is that if somebody comes in and wants to turn a uh a store into a uh gym? What, how does that happen?
So they would make an application for a conditional use permit to the zoning administrator. Um, that is handled by staff, but it's a discretionary uh permit that requires public noticing in a public hearing.
But staff could theoretically decide it needed to go before the planning commissioner or whatever, right?
Yes.
So Commissioner Swisher just asked me a question and I want to answer it and make sure I understand the request on the table. So um, you're saying because of all the applications we've had for new gyms and fitness places in the city. Right now, there's it it should be its own category category where it could, it could be like uh if somebody comes in to set up a gym for like, I'm just using one specific example. We would have certain dis- uh a certain definition of what it is, and then it would be either conditional or by right, depending on which zone it would be. But you're suggesting, the reason it's come up is because we don't have a definition and we're treating it as a school, right?
We're treating it as a school and as the schools, it's the way that this parking regulations are for schools are clearly meant for um our our, you know, K through twelve schools, not not gyms. So yeah, we're my my suggestion is this, that we have a specific definition uh that we can apply. And here I've provided uh the definition is provided that that's used by the city of San Rafael. Um, it's facilities providing equipment and areas for exercise, training, recreation, and classes for individuals, groups, or both. Examples of these facilities include, but are not limited to, health clubs, gymnasiums, indoor sports facilities, rock climbing facilities, et cetera. These facilities are primarily drop-in facilities and may include accessory instructional uses. Um, see school specialized education training for uses primarily involving instructional or education training. So to this extent, you can see this really is just looking at in indoor facilities. Um, and they've they've separated out some what they would consider to be more instruction um based for education educational training, like our martial arts school would be a, to me, and my interpretation would be an instructional service, not a a fitness facility. But what I like about this definition from the city of San Rafael is that um it says include but not limited to, so that does still give uh staff some discretion when we're working with applicants. Um, you know, about about how we interpret the definition and how we want to apply it.
So to address Brock's point is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jackie, we're not trying to change the way it's, we're not trying to make it like uh come before the commission as opposed to go before the staff. It's just putting in a definition so that you can just point to the code and say this falls under the category of a fitness facility and here are the zones that you can
Correct.
what the staff has to do next.
If it was an allowed use, they would be allowed, permitted to have it in that space uh by rights as long as they had the adequate parking. Um, and if it was a conditionally uh permitted use, then they would still follow the same procedure for a conditional use permit to the zoning administrator. We're not recommending that this would go higher up the chain and require review by the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah.
But I like this San Rafael's definition. I don't see why it would be just easy to adopt that.
I don't.
You don't like it?
Well, you're a lawyer, but I thought you don't like it.
Um, it still seems to me it boils down to parking and uh you know, some places uh have lots of additional parking around them and others don't, so. Um, and I guess noise is the other factor, maybe.
Well, I think they can separate it into facilities that would be noisy and for the fitness facilities that would not be, but I guess almost all of them are noisy, right?
I think we should anticipate that there's a noise impact for any fitness facility.
If you have music playing.
Yeah, I think any, I I I.
Just don't know, like you don't know, you could, and that goes into the details of what kind of what they're going to do. I mean, you could say like Pilates, yoga is generally quiet, but.
Is music in yoga?
Well, I don't know. I don't.
I've been in some really loud yoga classes.
Yeah.
But getting back to the the definition is is fine, but it doesn't really tell us what what we're supposed to be doing, basically.
I don't think we need to be doing anything. I think what we're doing is we're coming up with the definition.
Right.
So.
It's not an action item. It's just, we're just having the discussion and um hope what I would, what I would like is if you believe that it would be beneficial to define this, that we could get um direction to bring in a a cons- a traffic, traffic or parking consultant to help us determine what is the actual um parking impact of a fitness facility, because it's seems like so so far we've kind of been winging it or using a parking standard that doesn't really seem to apply to this use in reality.
Right. Well.
I think it's gonna be difficult because every one of these facilities is gonna be different with in terms of number of members, what they do, drop-ins, time you're there. So it's gonna be really hard to um come up with a catch-all thing that's gonna cover each of them. Like, for instance, an individual training place might get one person two people per hour, whereas a yoga class could have twenty or thirty requiring parking. So I I don't really understand.
Tam Racket Club could have fifty.
But on the same note, on the same note, you can use a proxy like square footage, you know, an individual training studio is gonna be a lot probably a lot smaller than
No.
you know, a fifty person.
What what does Florida Madera do with it? Because they have several. I mean, you look down at the corner of Mag- Magnolia, or you know, down you know, where the deli used to be, there's no a fitness facility. How how do they handle it?
I don't know how Gordon Madera handles it. They don't have a definition for fitness facility in their code, so they may be in a similar situation like us. Um, I, you know, I think that when you read, sorry, when you read the um I don't know if you've spent any time recently with permitted and allowed uses in the various zones, but when you read through those, you can tell that they're quite dated. Um, and yoga studios and Pilates studios and all of these small fitness centers, it's seems to be really kind of a new thing in the last twenty years, looking at the records. Um, so I I do think that there's a need for this um and a need to define it, especially as it relates to parking. And to your point, uh Swisher, I I agree with you that there would be, uh, it it will vary, um, which is why we use proxies like square footage for different uses uh for retail, um, but then for things like restaurants, it can be square footage or seats, and then we will use whichever one um is is higher in that case. So I having a a parking consultant come into the conversation could help us really tease out what do these actually look like and how much different is a place like a an Orange Theory Fitness from a uh yoga studio that has room for ten mats and they're having five classes a day and how how do we need to work with those? Um, and and continuing to have con- conditional uses does give us more discretion over that to look at them on a case-by-case basis versus just saying they're allowed uses um with a single parking standard. But it doesn't negate the fact that we should define them.
I will say that I, when I did a little bit of research online, I only found two towns that had a definition. One was in Petaluma and one was in Long Beach. So, yeah, um. So I I don't think many other cities have looked at this, but doesn't mean we shouldn't. Um, and I understand why you're asking. But even for the parking, I mean, you're you're talking about that you could have a standard of of um, you know, how big the square footage is that would relate, would could would uh have a ratio to the parking, but it's also like what's available. Like what's available downtown is very different from what's available at Lapsburg Landing, for example, or Bon Air. So it is gonna be a little bit more tricky than just putting in something really simple that says, you know, a small yoga studio gets two spaces or a private training facility gets one space and a big tennis club gets fifty. I think it's there there has to be a little bit more to it, that we're not gonna be able to answer tonight.
But but in fact, it it seems like it's, it works presently. It's a conditional use permit if if staff feels that it should, it needs to be looked at more carefully, it can come before us. And uh and and have input from from uh the public at the same time. So I'm not sure, I mean, I think the definition here is fine, but.
Well, when I looked at the definition, I mean, I I see it saying exercise, training, recreation. I mean, are you trying to pick up playgrounds on this? Or when you say recreation, because that's like
Right, as I just provided what is.
I I know, but I mean, that's just, I I'm just thinking ahead to somebody comes in and they looking at this definition. Because um.
I wouldn't think a playground would fit into this because it it's um.
See, and a facility providing equipment and areas for recreation. You could say a playground fell into that. Now, not that I'm expecting there to be a brand-new playground put into our city, but that there may be. So I'm, it it's just, we just have to be thoughtful about how we're defining things, um, like exercise, training classes. I mean, it's almost like you're you're including classrooms in here. And and when I was looking at Long Beach and Petaluma, they made a point about separating out outdoor exercise facilities and indoor. So I don't know why that matters exactly, but there must be a a reason why they did that. So if they're trying to define for fitness facilities, they wanted to ensure that it was just indoor was, goes back to the tennis court example, like we clearly have some just out, you know, we have areas that include outdoor exercise. Now, maybe it doesn't matter, maybe doesn't make any difference.
Um, Jackie, dude, I mean, we're we're not, we we can take some time and work on the definition. I think I mean, I, it seems like we need to give you some guidance on whether we should look into this and we're interested in giving a definition for this use. And that exact wording can be worked out at a later date, but there's some background work that needs to go on. It sounds like on your end with a parking consultant. Um, is that, is that accurate? I mean, because like I'm I'm okay, I I'm in favor of defining it and and uh it seems like it's it's a use that our city has and it should, you know, using using a school doesn't really make a ton of sense, so. Uh, it seems like a good idea to come up with a definition that's a little more accurate. At least to say whether it's conditionally uh allowed or if it's just an allowed use. Um, and then we can work on the definition later as it comes up, because I mean, I agree with you. I don't think the intent is to include like a tennis court or a playground, but maybe this definition would.
Well, well, maybe this is something you could think about also, Jackie, because you've raised this as an issue, is what do you think that, well, maybe you could propose something? I mean, I know you've given us what San Rafael has. This was probably drafted a while ago. Um, like if you need, if you to be able to do your job, when people come in with recommendations, do we need to include like spas and saunas? I mean, I I don't know if those are included in in this, like an international orange type place in um, that's in uh Lapsburg Landing. So I, again, if you you wanna give it, maybe you could propose something that we could then look at and refine and define and we can give you some feedback.
Sure, yeah. Today I just needed to know if you wanted, if you wanted to define a fitness facility and dive into this more, or if you felt like it's working fine as it is today. Um, I I can spend more time and bring a more complete proposal to you.
Well, well, let me ask my fellow commissioners, what do you think?
I mean, I think it's interesting and and when I was, I was kind of focused on the San Rafael um definition, because then I was like, okay, well, what's the definition of health clubs? Are we gonna have to to find that? You know, are we going to have to, you know, when you were saying spas and saunas, I was thinking similar thing into the health club definition, like where does that line draw? And then, you know, if it's recreation, is it, and you know, like an indoor trampoline park or, you know, some type of facility that's for kids' birthday parties that house recreation and and stuff, you know, it's like those types of places. And it's like, I don't see that we necessarily have those sites available to, you know, for someone to to build that, but you know, are we trying to create the rules preemptively for what could come versus also what's already here? Like what's already here, it seems like the rules have made sense, but I guess what we're looking at is planning ahead.
I guess maybe to just take what you've just said is, if you we do go ahead and define it, you may be putting yourself in a box here in the future. Um, so that's just something to be mindful of as well.
There is language with um within the code that gives the planning director latitude to to um spec- specify a use that is within the intent of the district. But that's usually with just the allowed uses, at least is that, does that sound right to you?
Right. And there's, it's likely, there's always gonna be something that comes up that doesn't meet the definition. And we have had requests to do indoor kids' facilities like at Bon Air Center and that former David M. Bryan's building that was empty for so long. So um I mean, that, there's always gonna be something that comes up that doesn't meet everything. There is some discretion for us to see if something's comparable to what's in the list, but um those stretch, that would be more of a stretch from school. Whereas if we had something that was a fitness center, I think it would be more comparable to a kids' indoor gym. So this, it's, I think it's harder to call everything a school. That's they it does not, they don't all seem like schools.
Right. So maybe then, think, I don't know, where are we going with this? Think about what you need here, what um, I think we've given you some categories that would could potentially fall under what you've provided us um, and for the San Rafael definition, um, maybe was intended or not intended. You had something to add?
No, I was gonna say, you know, I I don't think you should look for trouble because it's gonna find you. I mean, I would say don't overthink things and let's not create a problem for ourselves that we have to unfix later.
And then the other question, I guess, following on from that is, if we have a definition now, is, is it gonna take away from another area of the code that has been working well so far? But it sounds like you're just looking at school, is that it?
I would say that this this stuff and the way that it's defined now has not been working well. Um, be be because it's happened and where these places have been proposed and have gone in have already received parking variances for more intensive uses, it's worked. Um, but what happens when, uh, I mean, I'm I'm thinking, what if it's not being converted from a more intensive use or but from a less intensive use? And now they actually are increasing the part, the the parking demand by quite a lot. But we're looking at it under a school definition, which says one and a half per classroom. So is one open yoga studio, one classroom? Um, is one requiring one and a half parking spaces? Or is it requiring one and a half parking spaces for the classroom? But or with one for every twenty students or one for every five students? Like, there's, there's a lot of gray area right now. And um, uh, the reason I've noticed it is just doing research as use permits are coming in. Or for instance, what kind of raised the flag on this today is we have a a an application for a conditional use permit for a business that is not a fitness facility, but it's within the same uh strip of commercial businesses. And there is a fitness facility there. And I was trying to work out what is all of the available parking and how is it allotted? And is there even enough parking here for all of the uses that exist today? And I started looking at this particular one, I said, you know, how did this even get approved? And what's the history here? And so I started kind of going down the rabbit hole. Um, so I I do think that it it could be useful, but.
Understood.
It will require staff time and it will uh require us um hi- to hire a consultant to help us with the uh understanding the parking and traffic.
Do you, if and unless anyone has any comments, what I was going to suggest is we have Jackie consider what we've said tonight, um, maybe come up with a proposal. We've, I mean, I've kind of provided some examples of things that when I think about fitness facilities and I look at this example, I questioned what was included or not, like you, you mentioned martial arts, I know we have one here in Larkspur. Um, Ross Valley is not part of, that's not falling, that doesn't fall within our district, does it? Ross Valley Bay Club, that's somewhere else, right? So we are only pool, like swimming pool facilities are Mount Tam Racquet Club. Is that correct? Public pool?
I think that's correct. And uh, all the gyms, climbing gyms, other kinds of workout gyms are all designated for that activity and have parking, a lot of parking. So um, it seems like we have the ability to not have that happen in the downtown, for instance, now and presently, but I think it's worth looking at. I I wouldn't hire a consultant yet to do that, but um, I think it'd be great if you take a take a closer look.
Um, can I ask a question to you all as I'm gonna go back to this? Do do we want to be able to have larger fitness facilities? Or is the preference to keep them to these smaller, what has been considered instructional um services? Because I hear a lot of maybe apprehension about having things that could be considered these bigger facilities, um, like the trampoline park and indoor um swimming and things like that. Because maybe the maybe an avenue to take would just be to expand on what are the instructional services? And then allowing uh those conditionally within the commercial district districts.
I I think it should be discretionary and I think it should be, it it's got to fit the 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 land and the space. So it the places that can accommodate something like that with reasonable parking are the places that we should consider, hence not trying to tie our hands by making some rule which does not apply to everything. And so I would say that, you know, let's say something bigger like a swimming pool or, um, you know, let's say if they build this new recreational facility, I I don't even know if that's planned, you know, is there gonna be a rec facility planned? I don't think we're planning on building one.
Oh, for like our, like for the community center?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, not at this time.
Yeah, right, so but if if ever something like that comes up, then, you know, then then you just just go on a case by case basis. Or let's say that place in in Bonner that could theoretically have that parking. So you then don't have to tie yourself to, you know, some rule that you made for a very relatively small area of downtown Larkspur, which couldn't accommodate something like that. You you see what I'm getting at? I I think the, I mean, I I think I understand, but it it seems like giving a definition might be helpful because that way, if that big facility did come in and you had like, you know, a, I don't know, four thousand square foot.
Yeah, I I guess I would always prefer discretionary than, you know, and discretionary on the on the planners as opposed to the planning commission, you know, city planner.
It seems like I I I maybe I'm not understanding it right, but it seems like this would be, instead of saying as a school, you know, one and a half per classroom, we'd be able to then say, well, actually, you know, we know that gyms are more intensive, so you need five parking spot, you need, you need a little bit more parking. And so it seems like it would give the city a little bit more, um, I guess credibility to say, you know, we need more parking here. That that's a little bit more accurate, I guess. Uh, I mean, I mean, that's that's how I'm interpreting it. It seems like gi- giving a definition, you you could fall back on less parking, uh interpreted as a school, it doesn't fit the definition. But, you know, for something that we know is gonna require more parking, it seems like it'd be a good idea to.
I mean, to solve your issue, you could still have that you would have the definition, so it would be fitness facility. And then you wouldn't even have allowed uses, you could just have everything as conditional use. I mean, if that's a simple way to do it. So schools doesn't, doesn't fall under school anymore. It's now a separate definition, fitness, and maybe everything except for coupled areas in the city would all be conditional use. But now you have your definition at least, you're not looking at schools, the school definition. Possibly, I I don't know, and I'm not really sure what the answer is on parking yet, but I feel that's a little bit later down the line.
I think we should move on.
Yeah. I agree. Um, so we're gonna leave it with you to propose something to us. So yes, we will, we will consider this and um and we'll re revisit it at a for a later meeting.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the direction, it helps I and I'll, I've been taking notes, so I'll incorporate that into some different um, different language, different text for definitions that we can then refine further.
Right, thank you. And then we're also going to discuss uh modifying the requirements of fence height exceptions uh to allow staff to approve without a public hearing when it's supported by staff and no objections are received by neighbors. Uh, Jackie, is this yours too?
This is. Um, again, so this is not an action item tonight. This is just to open the discussion for something that you may want to consider or you may not. Um, so this evening, I'd I'd like the the staff would like the commission to discuss the fence height exception permit process and consider whether it would be reasonable to amend the zoning code to allow an F H E to be reviewed and approved at the staff level um in a similar process to minor exception permits. Um, historically, the fence height exception permit procedure was established under the provisions of ordinance five nine eight that was adopted in nineteen seventy eight. Um, and at that time, all fence height exception permits were deliberated upon and decided by the planning commission. In nineteen ninety three, the office as a zoning administrator was established and their responsibility for deciding fence height exception permits was transferred from the planning commission to the zoning adminis- administrator. Um, so today, anyone who wishes to build a fence that exceeds the fence height regulations must apply for an F H E permit, um, which requires a a public, a a noticed public hearing um, uh, and is heard and decided upon by the zoning administrator. Um, there are specific findings for a fence height exception permit. Um, fence height exception permits do have a flat fee of four thousand dol- four thousand nine dollars. Um, that is because.
Can I ask a question that, did I see correctly that it was raised from one thousand to four thousand dollars? Was somebody smoking crack on that one? What, seriously, what are you that about?
That went from one thousand to four thousand dollars and that was part of uh the annual um fee schedule. That was a, is is adopted and and adjusted every year. Um, and so that is.
Based on, I'm sure it's curious, what is the four thousand dollars based on?
Staff time and.
Based on the actual hours required to bring an application to the zoning administrator hearing. And so that's from reviewing the application, visiting the site, preparing a notice, mailing the notice out to everyone, postage, copying, preparing a staff report. So the hearings just require a lot more time. At one thousand, it was just being subsidized by the city.
Got it, understood.
That's always a possibility to reduce prices and just have the city subsidize certain applications.
So that's actually, that's exactly my question. It by doing something like this, but to reduce the cost and the burden on the on the applicant in terms of cost, because that seems prohibitively expensive.
So it as staff level review would not require as much time, staff would still need to go out to the site and but and and if there's a notice involved, there's still work involved, but would involve no staff report and public hearing and.
Right.
And the time.
Theoretically could reduce.
Picking up minutes and all the other things that go along with a hearing.
Yes, the question is also, are you encouraging people to build fences or you discouraging people to build?
As Robert Frost says, good fences make good neighbors, if you recall that poem. Uh, no, I just think that it would having had some experience with neighbors on this, the I I know it was expensive. And I think one of the problems with having fees that are that high is it basically causes people just to say, I'm gonna do it and I'm not, I'm gonna ignore the planning commission and the city rules. And I'm just gonna build the fence and let them tell me to take it down. This is exactly what my neighbor did.
And then to that point as well, um, when you have someone who builds the fence and then incurs a code enforcement action, they then have to pay double the the fee. So if they want to then go through the fence height exception permit process, if we've given them indication, listen, you've put up this fence, um, you, it would have required a permit. Now we're telling you, you have two options, which is to either make the fence conform or to go through the fence height exception permit application process. And because they're doing that in response to code enforcement, the penalty is to pay twice.
Yeah, I know this, right, I I, you know, it's interesting in Larkspur, this is going off the the rails a little bit is is or off the agenda is that different places in Larkspur require different fence heights for things like deer abatement. And you know, there's downtown fences and then there's fences up in the hills, which you need big fences. And that's why I think a lot of people violate the rules and say they don't want their their plants eaten by deer. So they put up, you know, large fences or they come figure out some way of getting around that. So just saying, it'd be nice if we could make it easier on people and not harder to do what's right for their property.
And um, to that end, I think that it would be, there's a couple of things that could also make it easier. And I I didn't go into them in this, and this is something that we can discuss. But um, I think as part of the fence height exception permit application requirements, having um proof of approval from your immediate neighbors at the time of application is just saving us the ultimate thing that's going to bring them to the point of needing um a hearing, what would trigger, so if if this goes to um what what we're proposing, which is these be processed as a minor exception permit. Basically, um, someone would come in with their application. If staff determines that we want to approve this application, we would send out a notice to the neighbors in the three hundred foot foot vicinity and say, this application has come in, we intend to approve it. Um, we will approve it unless we receive a protest within this specific time period. So if we receive a protest, then it has to go to a hearing. If we don't receive a protest, then it would be approved on the tenth day after the notice is sent. Um, so if we have proof at the time of application, listen, all the neighbors are in support of this. You know, you won't get, or it's very unlikely that you'll have someone who's going to contest it. Um, and we could also discuss, um, maybe we want to discuss some design guidelines for fences. Uh, we don't have any at this time. And today I was at a land use um planning for wildfire training that was put on together by Cal Fire and something that they spoke about was um, you know, materials used for fences and hardiness for um wildfire safety. And I I started thinking, I said, you know, we don't even have anything about that um as a condition or even as a best practice um a about fences. Because if a wooden fence catches fire and there's a wooden gate that then attaches to the side of that house, you've got um a really, you you're just asking for the house to catch on fire. Um, and I I looked into a little bit of what central Marin Fire is is really focused on vegetation management. So they're not really discussing fences either. Um, so these are all things that we can talk about and we could fold this into into the fence height exception permit process.
I just add a comment to that because you were just saying about the the wildfire and and the fences. And I know for my house in Greenbree, I routinely, when they come through and do the assessment, you know, by the wildfire authority inspection group, um, the one of the things that we get dinged for every time is that I have gates that are wooden that are attached to my garage and house. So they are looking at it at least when they come through and do those inspections.
Okay, thank you for that.
So you're looking for feedback and comments from the commission?
Yes.
You want to.
And sure.
Any public comment too?
Oh, any public comments?
Oh, that's true, sorry.
I don't see any hands raised. I think it's just us.
Are are you here for one of the one of the public hearing items tonight? And you don't have to, if you have something you'd like to add, you're welcome to, and if you don't, you can just listen. If you want to come up to the microphone so we can hear you and everyone can hear you.
I am in a code enforcement violation for a fence that was there when we bought our house.
You want to introduce yourself, sorry.
Cindy Halble.
Okay.
So um, the fence has been there for probably twenty years, plus I've lived there for twelve years. Um, the the price is just prohibitive for us to keep that fence. It does not make sense for me to spend eight thousand dollars to keep the front fence. That said, I think it would likely be approved based on the condition of the fence and how it looks. It's not, you know, it's set off the street, it's not a wall. But we're probably gonna end up having to tear down a perfectly good fence because the cost is prohibitive. Um, I'm just one, you know, I don't know if other people have these same issues. But when I saw this on the agenda, that's uh why I decided to come. Because I think it's a shame for us to tear down a perfectly good fence. But eight thousand dollars to keep what amounts to maybe fifteen feet, that's not meeting the twenty foot setback.
And how did it get to eight thousand, sorry?
Four thousand plus four thousand violation because it's um after the fact.
I see.
But it wasn't your violation, was it?
It was not, we bought the house that way, but.
But knowing.
There was no, there was no, uh, well, we didn't know we needed a permit for it at the time we got, we bought it, but now we do.
This is, this is a very common problem. I mean, you you're not alone. I mean, as I said, neighbors all around me uh have built, you know, ten foot fences just to keep deer out. And of course, they completely are not compliant, but nobody's complaining because they don't want the deer on their property either.
See, I would say we.
We'll follow, we're gonna follow the the town's guidelines on this, one hundred percent. We're still in the process of trying to figure out what the right thing to do for our particular situation. But when I saw this come up on the agenda, I thought I'd offer my opinion that if you reduce the fee, I would pay it and try to keep my nice fence, but um at the cost of that now, it doesn't make sense.
But if you, just to add to that though, if you, even if you paid the fee, you would still have to comply with the ordinance on what the requirements for the.
Well, she just need to get a fence height exception.
Right, but doesn't have to comply with the findings?
Yeah, but I, so in her case, it would have to comply with the findings, we could make the findings.
You can make the findings, okay, that's what I was gonna say, no point you paying the fee and then getting declined.
Fence setback far from the street, it might be like six inches over, maybe.
Fine.
Yeah.
It's not.
So it's just one that would have been approved had they asked, I or, yeah.
Had prior owner.
We probably would have issued it.
Got it, which neighborhood are you in?
I'm in Madron Canyon.
Madron Canyon, okay. Um, well, thank you very much for your comment, thank you. Well, thank you very much for your comment. Thank you. I mean, I'm coming at it from, you're up in the hills. I'm in like plan development.
Right.
So from. What I've seen is some of the fences that go up, go against the grain of what a plan development is supposed to look like and it's very closed off. So I mean, to address the question that's here tonight, I think it's. It's actually not a bad idea to take it away from the commission and just give it to the zoning administrator. We don't necessarily have to have. All of this come to us. And it would reduce the cost hopefully as well. I mean, you've made some much lower suggestions for the application fees. But I would just want to be very careful that what we're not doing is. Is making it really easy for everyone to put fences up, especially in certain neighborhoods.
Yeah, I agree. I think it is also possible to come up with some kind of. Intermediate solution in which there is the ability for people to have. Not necessarily in front of the planning commission, but from, you know, the staff, et cetera, to have some kind of process by which they could. Either appeal in your case, without having to pay an eight thousand dollar fee. I mean, some kind of administrative action. Where, you know, common sense prevails as opposed to, you know, things like that. And I don't know exactly what that is. I have to think on that.
Well, wouldn't that, because once it's with the zoning administrator, they would have some discretion, but then there's. The whole point, isn't it, of the language and the ordinance? That's our common sense there, right? So as long, and this is what I was trying to say is, if the. Sorry, I forgot your name, but if you came in and you, in your application for a fence height exception met. The requirements in the code. Then the zoning administrator would. Apply the. The rules and then they would grant the fence height exception.
Or give them the authority to grant exceptions. Unless, like you said, in the language, if a neighbor objects or some other thing that comes up that. You have to go for the planning commission. I'm just trying to figure out ways of making easier for homeowners to comply with the rules as opposing to break the rules. Because of the cost. And that seems as you raise costs, you're gonna have more and more rule breakers.
Yeah, and I think we're saying the same thing here. I, my, one, I think what I'm, one thing I'm saying that maybe you're not saying is. I don't want it, I don't want to make it easier to suddenly put up big fences that are in violation of the code.
Um, so I'd like to, I failed to put the findings on your memo and I think that those are important. So. Currently, fence height exception permit findings are the following. Fence height will not create hazards by impairing the view of pedestrians or traffic. So on, fence height will not impair access to light. And air of structures on the subject property or neighboring property. Fence height will not block significant views from structures and outdoor areas. And the height and design of the fence will be compatible with the scale mass and architectural character of the structures in the neighborhood. And the fence height will not significantly visually obstruct or reduce openness of the street scene comprised on front. Yards or street side yards in the neighborhood.
Right, you did include it in your.
I did, okay.
Yes, yeah.
And it's a very well-written ordinance. It really is. It is a well-written ordinance. We, I mean, I'll just give you, my house has a fence height exception because of that reason and. And it was designed in such a way as to not obstruct any kind of views of traffic coming around a corner or anything like that. At the same time, allowing it to be high enough to keep deer out of the property. So, I mean, it's doable and it's got to be done within reason, which is. I think that ordinance is a good ordinance, but I think there's got to be some kind of mechanism for people not in compliance to be able to have their. Non-complying fence, like in your case, examined without triggering an eight thousand dollar fee. I mean.
That's what she's suggesting. Yeah, she's suggesting a lower thing.
Right, I saw that and I think it's great.
Going to have it with. My only, my one suggestion was if you, where's the notes here? Well, somewhere, somewhere in your memo, you had said that. It would be granted, if it would be granted if there was, if there was no neighbor objection. I think, thank you. I think it would, that should be expanded to. Neighborhood association. So if there's a neighborhood association in place and there's a requirement. That the neighborhood association has to grant approval, then that should also. And I've seen that before in applications where you've shown that neighborhood associations have also. Been given approval and it should comply with the findings, or you should be able to make the findings in the code. I mean, what I'd love to do is. Put a reasonableness requirement in here. And that gives a lot of discretion to the zoning administrator. So. In a case like yours, where it's just six inches higher than it should be, maybe that's reasonable, maybe that's okay. I mean. But that goes about changing the code and I don't know if we want to do that. Tonight, so. Anyway, I've done a lot of talking here. I should allow my fellow commissioners to talk as well, sorry.
I, I don't think you want to. Change the height, just because it tends to creep that way.
Oh, well, no, I was just suggesting putting reasonableness in. So if something, because what it has in here right now is. Significantly visually obstruct or reduce the openness of street scenes. And I wondered if unreasonably. Unreasonably or significantly. It's just, it's hard to know what significant means, that's all.
To some people, it means different things.
Exactly.
So.
And by putting a reasonableness standard in there may make sense. I'm. It was just thoughts I was having. I'm just sort of. Making suggestions.
I think, just from my own experience and putting fences on people's properties, it's worked pretty well. You're gonna have people that just do it. And, you know, probably for some of them, it doesn't make much difference if they end up having to pay a penalty. So. You know, they just, just wing it and hope for the best.
So what are your thoughts about? Having the zoning administrator.
I think that's fine.
Take this over. Okay.
Absolutely.
Um, I just want to clarify, it would be. Determined by staff. So it. In this, like, sorry, I'm just thinking back to our prior discussion. So we have. The zoning administrator with a public hearing or a staff decision that does not require a public hearing. So we're trying to say. Right now, it's currently decided by the zoning administrator with a public hearing. Staff do act as zoning administrator.
Right.
However, in this new instance, it would just, it would be discretionary by staff, not in the zoning. Administrator role. Elise, am I?
Yeah, because that's what you've said here. The staff serving in the zoning administrator role. Would, would. Review the application is what you're saying.
No, it's fine that the requirement, in-person meeting unnecessarily strains staff time. So my. My proposal is that it goes to the planning departments as a staff level decision, not a zoning administrator decision. And I'm sorry if that wording is.
Oh, I misunderstood that. So is there one individual who acts as a zoning administrator or is it anyone at the staff level?
So it used to be Kristen all the time. And then Alex has been doing it, but then I think Jackie has done it too occasionally when. Jack, when Alex isn't around.
So it's generally.
So, yeah, it could be just the planning director, but I've delegated it to others. And it historically was Kristen.
So why can't we keep a zoning administrator?
You could, without a hearing. It's like.
Without a hearing, right?
That wouldn't, it would just have no, essentially no difference in staff, except for that. Someone's appointing the zoning administrator to make that decision.
Because I think we were here when we tried. It's right, right, like two years ago, we were talking about the role of a zoning administrator. You may remember that and. It seemed like we took a lot of things away from the planning commission to put them in the zoning administrator on the assumption that the zoning administrator. Was a fairly consistent role that had a lot of experience and would therefore give consistent reviews.
I think that's a good.
And if needed, would kick it back to us.
Right.
That was.
As opposed to anyone who happens to be working behind the desk at that point in time.
No, I think it should be the zoning administrator.
Any other comments on that, Rand?
You've been hovering over your button.
I mean, I think this makes a lot of sense. The fence height exceptions seem like pretty minor things to have to come before. A public hearing and I'm especially comfortable with it if. You, if the people coming in for approval have. Proof of approval from their immediate neighbors. I mean, it seems like that's. The root cause of a lot of the disputes that require a public hearing. And if you have that before you apply. It seems to me like that. Sort of corrects a lot of the issues that have been brought up tonight and. A lot of the issues that are brought up at a public hearing. So that's my two cents.
I guess what I'm trying to understand now that we've kind of gone back to it being zoning administrator. When I look at the ordinance from nineteen ninety three. And the eighteen point oh six oh three zero and oh four zero. They seem like they cover this, like they're broad enough to cover this.
I'm sorry, cover what exactly?
Just this, this change in how fence height exceptions are decided by the zoning administrator. If we're gonna keep it with the zoning administrator. It says that they have the power to approve, conditionally approve, deny, refer to the planning commission. They can attach conditions. In addition to other powers granted, they may adopt rules and procedures necessary or convenient for the conduct of business. So to me, those two. Paragraphs seem like they are broad enough to cover.
So you're saying that this is already covered by, this is already reviewed?
That's the way I interpret it.
Do you want to address that question to staff?
So looking at, and I'm reading ordinance eight fifty seven that you sent us and the code sections eighteen oh six oh three zero and oh four zero. And they seem to me like they're broad enough that they cover. As long as it stays within the zoning administrator. I know.
Yeah, I think it would, it would work fine. I guess the only one little. Key is, do you want a public hearing or not? So that's, I think that's what's making it. More expensive for people and a bigger process. So, but the zoning administrator approves other things without public hearings, signs and things like that.
I'm not hearing anyone on the commission asking for a public hearing.
Yeah, so it could, it could work out similarly with the rules. It's just, we'd need to take out the requirement for a public hearing for a fence height exception.
Right. So are you going to propose a, are you gonna come back? Is this gonna come back with a proposal? Right, okay. So, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, it sounds like we're all on agreement. No public hearing is necessary. What do you guys think about?
Unless you have neighbor opposition.
Unless you have neighbor opposition.
Yeah.
But I also think you need.
Could we make a motion to that effect?
Well, I think you also need. Neighborhood association approval. I don't think you can't, you can just have.
We do require. We do require the HOA form with all of our applications as a, that's a standard requirement already.
I didn't want that to be overridden. I think I feel a little bit more strongly about this than maybe anyone else on the commission, but. And I'm just, why, my one, I'm sort of being open about this. I just, my one concern is, I just didn't want people to put fences up. And, and. That people are going to do it, right? I don't, but. So if you're going to do it and not get. And not, and you're going to make it an exception or allow this to apply with neighborhood, neighbor approval. We just need to know what the neighborhood approval is and we also have to have housing, housing association approval. That was. I just didn't want this to override the housing association approval. Understand.
And I guess the only question I have is if. If somebody's put up a fence without, it's over the height limit, without a permit. And then later down the line, somebody sees it, they have to pay the four thousand dollars theoretically. But if they get all their neighbors to sign off on it, does it then stay at the?
But I think it goes down, right? The application for, the whole point is, if somebody. Needs to apply for an exception, they can just apply for this lower fee. Does this fee cover your costs?
For the, for administrative approval? I don't think we've calculated it, but there's probably other, yeah, we'd have to calculate it to see, especially if we have to send out a notice. That's, it might be around a thousand dollars if you consider visiting the site, sending out a notice.
Okay, you, I mean, you've come up with a fee proposal here, so.
My, I do have a concern about requiring neighbor. Approval because some neighbors are not that willing to approve things of their neighbors. So. I think we'll have to be careful with the wording just to make it so that we could still potentially approve something if a neighbor refuses to give. A paper or if they're unreasonably withholding their approval of it. I think if, or if we're doing a process that allows people to object. That could be their opportunity too. But we could ask for that they've shown the plans to the neighbor. That there's some evidence that they know about it.
Or they have a timeline to respond in.
Yeah, because it's, there's problems when some neighbors.
Right. So what, where do we go with from this? So do we? We were agreeing to allow the hearing requirement to be taken out of this. But there now needs to be a change in the rules, right?
Yeah, well, we could return with an ordinance that. Can come back for your review.
Right, okay, I think what. So is that it? Or do you need any special motion from us?
No, that's enough direction.
Okay, right, well, thank you very much. Where's my agenda? So now moving on to the business items on the agenda, we need to approve the minutes of February twenty seven.
Motion to approve the minutes of February twenty seven.
I'll second.
Roll call please. Or can we just all say?
Commissioners Wagstop?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Right, thank you. And do we have any planning commissioner reports? Are we all here for the next meeting? Yeah, of March, yes.
I may be hiking down the Grand Canyon.
This close to that date? Okay. Do we have any updates of any of the new developments in town? Any of the potential sites?
Oh, for the housing element?
Or on that and the Lucky site?
Oh, nothing new, no. No one's pulled any permits. We did have a discussion with the. Applicants for the Magnolia Village project. They were. Asking for more details about applying for a building permit, but they haven't mentioned anything yet.
And nothing on North Magnolia? That's still for sale and?
Or that project, that's the one where they came and talked to us about. What's required for the building permit.
The same owners, so they didn't sign it? Oh, interesting, okay. Okay, so can we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
You want to second it too?
Way, it's my big opportunity.
Do you want to?
Get all in favor of that one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.